You've got mail.
All right, my little clock here says 3:59, so by the time we get started it'll be 4 o'clock. Should we start off with the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, welcome everybody. We had minutes sent to us, we have copies before us, is there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of August 3rd at 8:00.
All those, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Payroll, an amount of $176,000, $19.78. Good, yeah, thanks. Anything unusual here or anywhere?
Yeah, things from the normal.
It's kind of normal range.
That same as last time?
Yeah, it is, I make a motion, we approve payroll in the amount of $176,019.78. And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we need to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims, the amount of $303,211.24. That's up a bit, I'm guessing you made a payment to something?
I can't think of the last time she didn't have all the claims totaled last time, so we added
Oh, okay, got you.
around last time too.
So do you know how much carryover there was?
I think it's only like $100,000 somewhere.
That's what about the normal range.
Which makes it back about where it should have been. I make a motion, we acknowledge a receipt of payroll claims accounts payable in the amount of $303,211.24, and I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, then we have hand typed check for Barney Caroll.
Barney, Barney Carroll, for $21,400. This claim is for the county highway, painting of six bridges.
Hey Jim, they're asking me to use the microphones if you guys can, if anyone can hear anything.
Okay, just make sure, Dan, pull your mic up there, scan for you, I'll pull this over here.
Use your personal microphone.
Oh, okay.
We got these speakers going.
Got you.
That loud music you've been playing back here.
Okay. So they painted bridges for the highway department, that's what this, how the cycle check is for. And Randy is satisfied with the job they did.
I can see that.
And you're saying the last name is Carroll?
Right.
Yeah, Barney Carroll, C-A-R-R-O-L-L.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
And it's for the bridges of the Neat, McAllister, Crooks, Big Rocky Fork, State Sanitarium Bridge, and Marshall Bridge. Sum of $21,400, paint and labor.
I'd make a motion, we approve the hand typed check to Barney Carroll in the amount of $21,400 for the painting and covering bridges for the county highway department. And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Then is Jane here?
I'm sure she is.
Jane Colisi is with West Central Solid Waste District. That's a solid waste district coming, and so we were talking about the recycling dumpsters out at the old ShopCo building. I didn't think they were being dumped as often as apparently they are. She says they're actually dumped, hauled off on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the cardboard on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so they're filling up pretty quick because there's been some times. And she said maybe, you know, they may have missed some times, so I'm going to start monitoring that better, make sure they are picked up on those three days. Because we've had days where they were packed and stuff piled on the ground overnight, so I know that they were packed earlier that day, doesn't mean that it didn't happen, but...
Let's just get her to launch, I know she's on her way.
Okay.
She has sent me a message.
Okay. Then we have a traveler payment.
We'll go back.
To... From the county highway, it's insurance payment.
The garage in the building, it looks like.
Yeah, the garage doors, yeah.
The garage doors, yes.
So it's just, we're getting a check from our insurance company to cover the costs after our deductible for that, for the $10,075. All right. Then we have some ongoing claims here, from people who have filed losses. Any report on those at all, Nick, anything we need to know?
These are just new filings, typical like, you know, rock falling off a truck, things of that nature. The one that I want to report on was the one we talked to the Parks Department about last week, and there's just a letter indicating here that that claim was denied.
Yes.
As to the individual ran into a tree that had fallen, based upon the fact that we had them noticed.
Okay.
So that just goes with what Chris had reported.
Okay. Then you got the traders' report before us? You guys got any more new business? See if I do have anything.
They're asking for microphones to be pulled closer to yet.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing else in new business, you guys don't have anything? Okay, old business, with the property indictment?
There's nothing new to the report there, no notices needed to be sent out so we can accept bids on the concrete.
Okay, okay. Then Cindy Todd, is Cindy back there?
She's right here.
Hope she is, didn't see her sneaking in there. So, what you got, building signs?
So, you and Grace had already looked at this, and Dan wasn't available that evening for that meeting, and you wanted him to weigh in on his thoughts of what Allison said, so I just came to try to catch Dan, to get his thoughts before we move forward with an official quote for signage.
And I have no problem with it, which I think that gets...
Yeah, there was that version, and then just like this, and it was a matter of kind of just what the preference was.
Right. And I don't remember what my preference was, I don't remember what they all looked like. Yeah, yeah. Stand alone out front, that has them all listed on there.
And decide that, let's go with that.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and get together our formal quote then of what that would be, and share that with you, we have a board meeting this Wednesday as well, so I'll talk to them, and discuss the cost and all that good stuff, so.
All right, this has to do with signage on this building here, now that we have more than one entity in this building, we need to have some signage out front so people can find what it is they're looking for. And so they're going to get us some quotes now on those signs, once we've agreed on what the design should look like. Okay, that's it, nothing else? Thank you very much.
If you have anything else, I'm going to go.
Okay, thanks. You guys have any old business? No? All right, department reports. Well, let's talk about this ordinance we asked about. The ordinance for the TML, for the TML vendor and what the fine would be, was set back in 2009, so that's been in existence for 11 years. We've never had anything in place requiring the landowner to be sure that whatever vendor he has or she has set up on their property, that it's a legal entity, which would mean they would have to have a transient merchant license to be a legal entity. The auditor's office has had to hire people during Bridge Festival time to go around every year, to try to confirm that all those who need to have a transient merchant license has a transient merchant license, and it's kind of a catch me if you can kind of a thing. It would be our hope, my hope, that we can expect the landowner to make sure that they have that transient merchant license, that that landowner can send them in the right direction about how to take care of that. So that's what this ordinance is directed to. So this is something that's affecting the ordinance from 2009 as well. It just says, whereas, 2009, that's the year this ordinance was passed, requires that any transient merchant conducting business in Park County, Indiana, must have a valid TML issued by the Park County Auditor's Office, and whereas property owners are in a better position to ensure the transient merchants that are conducting business on said property owner's property hold a validly issued transient merchant license, and whereas the county commissioners have determined that a penalty should be imposed for a property owner's failure to ensure a transient merchant that is conducting business on his property possesses a valid issued TML prior to conducting business, and now then let it be ordained that the penalty for a property owner's failure to ensure that any transient merchant that is conducting business on said property owner's property has a validly issued TML prior to conducting business shall be a fine of $500, and said fines shall be imposed per occurrence, per day, that is, every separate violation on every separate day shall result in a separate $500 fine. And that in all other respects, ordinance 2009 H12 shall remain in full force, except as specifically amended herein. That just makes sure that all the vendors who come to the county to set up a new business as a transient merchant, which means they're doing business at a location other than the location, the address on their retail merchant certificate, that they have a valid transient merchant license according to state statute, that that now becomes their responsibility as well. And failure to do that, in other words, if they allow a business to set up, an illegal business, illegal because they don't have that transient merchant license, that that landowner would also then be responsible and would be in a finable position with a fine of $500 for each business that he allows to set up without that transient merchant license, because the landlord can control that. He doesn't have to go get the TML for it, he can just simply say you can't set up and you can't operate business until you get that transient merchant license, so instead of the auditor having to chase people around the county to do that, the landowner would be responsible to do that. So that's where we are with that. Okay, so you guys want to discuss on that, you want to act on that today, what's, what are your thoughts?
I would just say act on it and be done with it. Just have no problem acting on it today. I had one call earlier this week from a property owner about this, and we had a pleasant conversation, it wasn't adversarial. And I explained to him that, you know, as a property owner, he should, he should know what's going on on his property, who is on his property, whether they're there legally or not legally, do they have all of the things that they're supposed to have. As a property owner, I would think you would, you would want to do that. You wouldn't want somebody setting up on your property and not fulfilling all the requirements to set up. And he understood that, he wasn't quite sure he should be fined, he said, you know, if I don't live there, I don't know that they don't have it. I said, well, but it's still your property, you're still responsible for that, so we had a good conversation, and, but he didn't say he wasn't sure he should be fined, he understood the vendor should be fined, but he wasn't sure he should be fined as a property owner, but...
Well, it's easy to avoid if he has that fine, you just make sure that the TML, or don't let them open up, it's not like you'd be composing anything. It's easily avoidable.
Are properly TML, then you'll be okay. But I know it is a lot of work on our auditor's office to have to go and try to find all these people and track them down, and who has it and who doesn't, and...
The really unfortunate part about that is it often gets confrontational too, you get people who don't want to buy a TML, it's only $100, and if you're doing business, that $100, you should have that TML. And it gets confrontational, and then the police department has to get involved because they get called over, because they get confrontational about it. And I don't think it's the auditor's job, or the people that do it on a part-time basis to be hired just for the festival time, to go out and hunt them down and do that, I think it's a reasonable thing, I mean, we encourage all the vendors as possible to come, and for all the landowners to bring as many people as they can. I know Bart Barnes always took care of it of his own in Bridgeton, I know Mike Rowe makes sure that they all have it in Bridgeton. I got a call from a gentleman in Mansville who does live there, he lives there as well, and I think he only has one or two in his place, and he had not thought about that before, and he's kind of like the guy whoever you talk to, that he wasn't sure that it was something he wanted to do, but he understood that it probably was his responsibility, he's letting them set up for business, so it probably ought to be a legal business, and I said, well, you know, we don't like to impose anything on anybody, but seemed like that makes common sense to do it that way.
And it's not for the ones we've never had trouble with, it's for the ones that's setting up and selling things they're not supposed to be selling, and it's what it's all about. We're not trying to put more work on the landowner, it's just if somebody sets up on you, that should be the...
When they pay the rent, they ought to be able to...
One of the questions you ask them, yeah.
Surely have a TML?
If they're paying rent, they ought to have to pay for their TML and be done with it.
What ordinance number would this be?
2020-16.
Dash 16?
Yeah.
So is our motion to approve the ordinance? Any more discussion for it?
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2020-15.
16.
16.
Oh, 16? 2020-16, I'm sorry. That will require owners to ensure that the vendors that they have, or the people they have on their property do have valid TML to be, conduct business on their property. And I'll second that.
If I could just, minute before we vote, just another clarification on that, we already had this type of thing with building permits, for example, it's your responsibility to go get that building permit, and if you don't, and you start business without, then there's a $500, 10 times whatever that your permit is going to cost, it could be more than that. So it's just the responsibility of whoever's doing that work to make sure he has that proper permit, so that the, Cassie Widemire, whatever position, I'm trying to think what it is, Plan Commission, Plan Commission, doesn't have to go chase people down and try to catch them in doing that, just take care of business, get it done, and then go do whatever you need to do. So it's been moved to second, that we adopt ordinance 2020-16, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay.
Now we can jump back to, is Jane here?
Yes.
You've set over here.
George is too, hi George.
Yeah.
How have you been?
Enjoying retirement.
Oh, good. Been throwing a lot of pottery?
I have, I have.
Good.
Got some new glazes?
Good, good to see, I was out by your place just the other day, I filled a big hole in up there where we got a pipe.
Around the corner at the orchard?
No, right before you get to the stop sign at the top of the hill, we got a water, drain pipe goes under the road there, and it's fading, it's got a big hole there, so I filled it just, just in the meantime, till they get a chance to get up there and dig it out and do another one.
He left the other there as a trap for you, George.
Yeah.
Oh, he had to dodge the other 50 between there and the highway.
Dan, why don't you go ahead and introduce who we got today?
We're on our way, we're working on it. George, previous commissioner, is my proxy for solid waste, West Central Solid Waste, there's been a few changes in the process, I think, over there with Montgomery County.
Still over there.
Up in the air deciding whether to come back out, and I thought I would just ask Jane to come and present to you guys and bring you up to date on
Great.
what's going on there. And how important it is that we maintain this solid waste district.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you, Dan.
George yours.
Okay, I do have a lot of information in here for you, so I can touch on it briefly, or you can read it at a certain leisure, let me know if you have questions, it's basically about who the solid district is.
Yeah, I think the main thing that we had concerns about, and the council as well, because they've asked about, I know that we have a certain amount of money in the bank, and we didn't know how that reflected on the fees that we paid, and what the impact would be if Montgomery County does pull out, how that would impact our share, so if you do explain that stuff for us, that'd be great.
Well, sure, so you're already familiar with what we do, and how we do, and all that.
Yes, yes.
If you would like to flip to page 12, where it says budget capital reserve and county contributions.
Okay.
That will show you a little bit. That will show you our general operating budget for this year is $302,000. The cash and investments at the end of last year for West Central is $946,793. The district's capital reserve is reduced, basically that $900,000, what you're seeing that number is, we're using about $115,000 of that every year to offset what the counties are contributing to pay for these programs, so that we don't have to come to you and ask for the full amount.
Okay.
We're using that each year to dwindle that down, it was just at $1,005,000 a few years ago.
That's what I recall, yes.
Right, now it's gone down about $500,000 just in four years.
Okay.
So that'll give you an idea of where we are. The 2019 expenditures for West Central was $2.38, basically a person, that covers our whole budget, we're asking each county to contribute $1.75 of that $2.38, which is what we're using, the reserve is covering that difference. The state average is $15.67 a person, so that gives you an idea of how low our number actually is compared to the state average.
Wow, that is.
I actually spoke to several other solid waste districts, and there's, I put a sheet in here, so you can see I'm not just putting this number out fictitiously. Towards the back, you'll see a page that looks like this, it's like a spreadsheet, and it has all of the solid waste districts that imply what their spending per capita is.
Okay.
And it shows you at the top that the, for 2019, the average was $15.67, and it shows you the lowest and the highest, the district, I put a little X on here, a little asterisk all on the side, you'll see some of these noted Blackford, Fayette, nothing against those counties, but not all of them provide household hazardous waste services such as our tox away days and our electronics recycling. Those are our most expensive programs, so that's what makes the numbers go up for the counties that are providing those services, which is what you want, those are your most dangerous materials that are being collected and handled properly out of your county.
Soon it would be accurate when people ask me to say then, because they're talking about their tax dollars going to pay for this recycling stuff, that only $2.38 is all it costs each person, ask me that question?
And we're not even charging that.
Right now, it's a...
Right, right, because it's being set off.
That's what it costs to us, the district, right, but we're not, we're not giving, we're not putting that all on you, we're trying to dwindle down that reserve a little bit.
So it's really a buck and a half, it's cost them to have their recycling bin out there all these years.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, if you want to, the page right before that, if you want to look at the numbers, I broke out the 2021 programs just for Park County cost, so if you're looking at this page.
What page is that?
This is, it doesn't have a number on it, I apologize, it's just the one right before the one we were looking at, and it says
Third page from the back.
2021 programs, Park County cost.
The one page farther than the one you was looking at. Almost the very last page, next to last page, your third.
I'll get there.
Did I not put mine in yours?
There it is, there it is.
Okay, so if you look at the cost, if you just did the tox away day, the electronics recycling day, and pay for the bins that are located at Rockville, at the old ShopCo, that would be your cost just in contracts.
Okay.
That $60,000 that you're saving there. What you're contributing right now, if you look towards the bottom of that chart, where it says Park County contribution to West Central, $1.75 a person, is half of that.
Okay.
So you're saving basically 50% just on the contracts alone, that does not include staff, overhead, anything.
Right.
That's just the vendor contracts.
Okay.
So that'll give you an idea, if you were doing it yourself, just the contracts themselves would cost you that number.
Okay.
And then down at the bottom is just a little bit more of a breakdown, just some more information, and then you can see the recap on the programs at the bottom, for the electronics recycling day this year, we collected over 9,000 pounds, the tox away day last year, we collected 86,915 pounds of tires, appliances, electronics, and household hazardous waste, and then the rural recycling center at Rockville, we collected 235 tons just at that one location.
Wow.
So, and that does get picked up, I spoke to Dan on Friday, and that does get picked up five times a week.
Yeah, Dan told me.
That's our most expensive and our most used of all of our nine that we sponsor.
I was, Dan just suggested that I watch it, because I know there have been times, because I go by it all the time, that's been full
Yes.
and stuff stacked around, and then I know that's been there a couple of days, so either it was filled that very first day when it came in empty, or the pickup was missed that day, I don't know about that, because I was surprised to hear that it picked up three times a week, so that's great.
Well, there's, one bin gets picked up three times a week.
Yeah.
The cardboard...
That's recycling, cardboard's Tuesday and Thursday, yeah.
Monday and Thursday.
Monday, Thursday, yes, and the others are Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the one with the doors on it.
Yeah, you can't do any better than that, so if that's the case, I'll just watch and make sure to do it.
And we have to have some extra pulls, we, the driver's really good about when he gets there on pull day, and if it's, looks like more, he can pick up on that one visit, they will send me a picture on my phone, and then I will authorize them to go ahead and pull an extra pull, but we get charged for that every time we do that, but we have been doing that, just to try to keep that eliminated, we don't want stuff floating around.
What's it cost for the extra pull, what's the cost?
It's about 100, between 150 and 175.
Okay, it's good to know that it's not a killer, but it's still money, but it's not a killer, we need that, because we have different events going on, of course, during the time, so...
Right, and during COVID, it's gotten worse, I mean, it's a good and bad problem to have, people are at home more, they have more time to do the recycling and the separate, these other eating at home more, so we're getting more materials, but we are also trying to keep up with those extra pulls.
Okay.
Where are we at with Montgomery County, and how do you think that's going to affect us?
I have not heard anything from Montgomery County, other than what was in the newspaper, I've heard nothing.
Okay, so what I read, that they were, and I think the number was 36,000, I don't know why, but they felt they could save this by having their own, and hiring their own people, create some jobs, that the net result would be all of doing the same they had before, create some jobs and do that, and still save 36,000, but that number I may make up in my head, I'm not sure that number's right.
What they said in the paper was 24,000, but I can tell you that the numbers that they presented at the committee meeting were not accurate, they were estimates, they were speculation, they were not true factual numbers.
Okay, so they may not make any change at all?
No.
Okay.
I would think that they would have to count cut programs if they're going to save money.
Looks to me like this is a pretty good deal, it's hard to imagine that we're only paying a buck fifty or a buck seventy-five a person a year, didn't have that recycling out there, so I think that's worthwhile.
Well, and not just that, I don't, I assume that the people in the county are aware, they could go to Putman or Montgomery County on a tox away day if they...
Yes, that's the...
I wasn't aware of that.
They could actually go three times a year.
Yeah, we didn't know that, so we need to get that in place.
And I have a flyer in here for you, because we have a tox away day coming up on September 12, so there is a full page flyer, we put this in the paper, and it does say at the very top, residents of Park, Putman, and Montgomery are welcome at all tox away days.
Okay.
And so that's the other thing, is that right now, our three counties, they have four opportunities between the three tox away days and the electronics day, if they go on their own, then they're going to maybe have one, so, because they won't be able to utilize the ones in Park and Putman any longer.
The tox away days?
Or they may try to.
Those tox away days alone are worth that buck and a half a year to me, just have some place to take that stuff, go, it is, and that would mostly end up either in our dump or our ditch, one or the other, yep.
Yes, it's one of those things, solid waste districts aren't glamorous, they're not, you know, one of those things that are on the top of people's heads all the time, it's one of those things that you, you probably won't notice us until we're not there.
Kind of goes a little...
You know, because I remember, I've been here for 25 years, I remember what the roads looked like before we had these services going on, and there was nothing in place to take tires and appliances and pesticides, and you would see all that stuff littering in your, in your ditches, there's hidden costs that you're going to come up with if you're not a part of a solid waste district, you're still going to have to manage those things, that's still state required in the statute, that you take care of all of those hazardous and problematic waste.
If you're available, I think it'd be great if you wouldn't mind doing the same thing you did today for us, for the county council, they meet the second Thursday of the month, at 9 o'clock, same place. They're the ones that pay the bills, we just tell them where it's spent, and they just do whatever they're told, they just might check for the output, but if you wouldn't mind coming and explaining that, because this is, I had no idea that per person was that cheap. idea that per person was that cheap. I guess.
And I guess we need to put her in contact with.
John Pratt.
John Pratt and let you work something out. If it's all right with you, I'll give John your number.
Yes, and my information is on, if you ever need anything, on this last page of this May report, on page 15, it forces questions at the bottom. All my information is in there.
That's perfect.
We'll get, make sure John gets that and let you coordinate with him. He was kind of, I think more than anything concerned that if Montgomery County did pull out, are our costs going to go up excessive?
I'm not anticipating that.
Are we going to be able to afford it?
I'm not anticipating that.
Which you understand how things, you know, in this day and age, it's every dime counts. So.
That's, that's true. And we do everything we can to keep our costs just, I mean, we probably run the tightest ship that you can find because we don't do anything that's not necessary.
Well, I appreciate you coming and sharing with us. That's good, good stuff to add.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Well, I do have a question. What, what is a response? But how does it work? Because it happens all the time. And I'm sure, I hope we're not the only ones. But when you get where the bins are full and people are just, we tell them, take it home with you, bring it back when the bins aren't full, but they leave it there. Stuff recycling, well, they leave some trash that I end up having to cut up and take care of myself or dispose of myself, just because I don't want us to lose that facility.
Right.
But when they just have the bags packed up along, stacked up alongside, what happens with that stuff? If it won't fit in the bin, the driver has no place to put it.
The driver has to come back and do it himself.
Don't come back after he load?
Yeah, he's not being paid for that. That's not his job to do that. But what we've been trying to get through to people is two main things. One, always flatten your cardboard because that just saves room in the bins. The other thing is, when people bring those large lawn sized bags of plastic bags full of recycling, I understand that's how you collect them at home and that's, you just pull them up, you tie them, you take them, you stuff them in there. But it takes up so much room. If you would just open those bags up and dump the things in there loosely, it'll fill in all those nooks and crannies. And you could get five times as much material in there. So that's the main thing we're trying to get.
Some signage to explain. That would be a good idea. It makes, it makes sense that it would fill those little spaces that aren't being filled with the big bags.
But you can't put a signage on the dumpster. It may not come back here.
Right.
Right. I've been putting a lot of things in the paper recently. I don't know if you've seen anything, but about the misuse of the bins and not leaving things out because it, you know, it's unsightly and then don't put things that don't belong because that contaminates the whole load. And we have a lot of signage up there already. Getting people to read it.
Yeah.
It's a different story without me standing there personally and instructing each person, which I have done. I have driven the van out, picked things up, just because I didn't want it looking like, oh, here's a free dump, you know?
I've done that a few times.
Encourage others. And I appreciate that. So we're doing everything we can do. If you have other suggestions or something we haven't tried, we have to do that.
I don't think it's any emphasis. I don't think anywhere on any signs that I've seen any way about opening the bags up.
No, that's a good thing.
If we could do that, that'd be, that'd be a good thing.
That's what they're trying to get that in the papers.
Okay. Because I can do that. I just pull the bag in.
I actually asked the hauler if they could somehow, like, take some stenciling and, like, spray paint that on the ends of their bins like a bright, you know, a bright paint because I thought that would grab people's attention when they're walking up there. But that's a lot for them to do apparently. But we'll keep working on it.
I appreciate the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
George, nice seeing you.
Good to see you, Jim.
Okay. Looks like you need to slow down your dance a little bit there. You're, you're walking a little tough. Are you okay?
Oh, yeah. I've got one foot, one knee, two hips and one back operation. So.
Those that don't know, George was the commissioner. How many years?
32.
Yeah. I've been president of the board here for 30.
Yep. Long time. We appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Jay.
How are you?
I'm fine.
What's going on down there? Are you waiting to see?
Yeah, waiting to see.
We need to approve then our.
Do you want to go ahead and address this while we're at it?
That's what I got right here. Yep. Yep. So we just need to vote on the, our, our payment would be, see your number here someplace, $30,343. That's a dollar 75 per person based on the current census. So we would just need a motion to approve the payment of $30,343 to the West Central Solid Waste District. So I guess I just made that motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All right. Moving second to authorize a payment of $30,343 to West Central Solid Waste District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Today's the 17th, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Chris O'Brien. Is he coming?
He's at the meeting.
Okay. Chris O'Brien is our emergency management director. How was your day?
It's going all right. A really big update I have is just we turned that money into the reimbursement of the CARES Act. It was a state. They approved it. We're just waiting for it to come in probably sometime this week.
Great. Okay. I appreciate your letter concerning the, the bridge festival. I thought it was very insightful. It's a lot of things people don't think about, the far reaches of the first responders and other things. So I appreciate that. Do you think from us you need?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chris.
Did we miss something in the old business of property and diamond? Did we skip that?
Oh, I did skip that because Cindy was here. That's right.
He brought it up. I told you that I haven't sent out another CD.
Oh, that's what it was. Right.
Nothing to report on that until that's.
Okay.
All right, we're good.
All right. Justin, Sheriff's not here, but Jason was. And Jason said he didn't have anything.
I'm still here if you need me.
Nothing you need. Okay.
Nope, thanks.
Randy Norman, is he back there?
Nope.
And Julie Landzone is not there. So do you guys have any other, any other business? All right. Any oil?
Yeah, I think we probably all, for Julie part.
Can't go over her report?
I was telling Nick before we started, we got an email from Julie last meeting, like at two o'clock in the afternoon. But I didn't open it up before our meeting.
Right.
So we didn't talk about it. So I made sure I responded to her after our last meeting that we just didn't talk about it because it wasn't brought up because we didn't get her email before the meeting. But Laura has put a copy of that request that Julie made two weeks ago. So I'm not sure, maybe something we even want to talk about and maybe want Julie to be here to talk about it. But she has a paramedic that has lost some vacation time and she's asking us to approve him to use some vacation hours because he's working overtime due to the pandemic and all that kind of stuff. It's probably something that Chris could get us reimbursed for for overtime, that kind of thing. But anyway, this letter about Jerry Cox is, I don't know if it's something we want to try to address tonight or not.
We have done this on two other occasions. We did it for a dispatcher, Bill, because he couldn't take time off because he had to work because we had to have dispatcher. And we just did it for someone else. What was the other, other time? But I know we've approved using that time when they just couldn't take it off because of circumstances. In this case, certainly the COVID. So I'm fine with that. Is that your motion then to approve those?
Yeah, I'll make that motion that we approve Jerry Cox to go ahead and utilize his vacation hours that he's lost due to having to work extra hours due to the pandemic. And I'll second that.
All those favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Laura, I bet you will approve that.
And I'll have Colleen, I'll have Colleen go into our computer system and update the computer system to put that time back on. Because what's computer system does is drop that time off.
Drops it off after.
Yeah. So then Colleen has to manually go back in there and change that.
Thank you.
Okay. I feel like you can't leave him shorthanded. He's willing to work overtime. It's doing us a favor. It would be right to take his overtime and.
No. Okay. Anything else, regular business stuff? If not, then let's move on to the decision about the covered bridge festival, whether we were going to have one for 2020 or whether we're going to cancel that. So we, we talked about maybe the best way to handle this vote. I know I can speak for all the commissioners. We have all done due diligence over the last time. If you remember how we got to this position, clear back when in May, when we first went in with restrictions and the governor came up with his back on track plan, July 4 was going to be the day that we were going to move into phase five and all those things were going to be lifted. So we picked our day to make our decision to be August 3, 30 days after that. So we'd have 30 days to see if there was a spike in the numbers after things were lifted. Well, it wasn't lifted, if you remember. It was stayed at 4.5 and it was going to stay there until the 18th of July. So likewise, we moved our time back two weeks. So again, we would have that 30 days to be able to see if the, if the virus was under control and everything was going to be okay. Because this is such a significant decision for us to have to make here. But then on the 18th, it was decided that we're going to stay two more weeks at 4.5. And then later that was extended on to August 27. We can't wait any longer than now because we have vendors who need to know if they need to be buying their supplies and get ready to afford this covered bridge festival. And so we are at a point where we need to decide if we are going to move forward with this or if we're not going to move forward with this, this year. And that's where we are. And that's the main point of our meeting today, even though it's a regular meeting, this is the biggie. So I'm going to ask the commissioners if they'd like to, to make a statement before we cast our vote to explain their positions. And then we'll all do that. And then we'll cast our vote and we will move with whatever that decision comes to be. So Bruce, you're the, you're the youngster here. You're the rookie on time here. So you get to go first.
I thought I'd be the last one to talk because of your seniority, but that's fine. You know, this decision is, is a big one. There's no doubt about it. We, this county has had this festival for many, many, many years. It's, it's been, you know, for, for most people, I think, a blessing to our county. And I think having the festival is important. But we've also got so many other things to be thinking about when we, we look at whether to continue this year with the festival or not. And I could probably talk for an hour. I mean, I've been talking to people for months, as we all have, accumulating information, accumulating data, talking to, to people about their ideas and thoughts. And, and I could probably talk for an hour, but we're not going to do that. I'm not going to burden people that are watching online, nor the rest of us here. So I'll do the kind of a Cliff Notes version of, of my thoughts real quick. First of all, when I look at this, the first question I ask myself, is there a risk? And I have, have researched, I have talked, and I'll have some more information here in a minute. And, and I've come to the conclusion that there is absolutely a risk to the people of Park County. And because that risk exists, we have to seriously consider whether the festival should continue or not. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to that have said the health and the lives of the people of our county are more important than any monetary value that we get out of the festival. I had someone actually tell me the other day, money's no good if you're dead. And so I, I, I think we have to acknowledge that we are at a risk if we have the festival. And, and not just those 10 days of the festival. This is going to expand past the festival. If we have a pandemic here in Park County, if we create ourselves an epicenter here in Park County, it's going to last past October 18th when the festival is to be over. There is no way that we can follow any of the guidelines that have been put out by the governor or by the CDC. We cannot social distance. Impossible, Bridget, impossible at Mansfield. We can't enforce people to wear masks even though they're required to by the governor's executive order. We cannot comply with any of the health requirements that are being put out. And so we've got a huge risk to the people of our county. If you just look at what's happened over the last few weeks, you can't say we don't have a risk. We've already got one school that's canceled and not holding classes. Our numbers have gone up over the last few weeks. Vermaine County's numbers have gone tremendously up over the last few weeks to the point where Vermaine County is now past Park County with the number of positive tests. So the numbers are going up and continuing to go up all around us. We have every other festival, to my knowledge in the state of Indiana, that has canceled. Hillclimb just made their decision last week, which Larry was a part of. The Little Italy Festival is canceled. Larry, you were telling me a festival down around Louisville brings in about 250,000 a year, just recently canceled. On and on and on and on, cancellations are going on all over the state. And for us to think we should be any different than what other counties and other people are doing, I just don't think is right. The Big Ten canceled football season. Indianapolis 500 is not having any fans at the race next week. You think all of these things were done without some knowledge and research of people who had the knowledge of what's going on? And then finally, we've got support that we've all received from our emergency management director who just was in here, who tells us in his position as emergency manager director, there is no way that we should have a festival. We have fire departments. We have frontline people telling us they cannot support the festival. I went ahead on my own. And by the way, I do want to thank Dan and Jim for allowing me to kind of spearhead a poll that we had in the Sentinel. And Larry, for you and your staff at the Sentinel, thank you for doing that on your Facebook page. And I think it turned out about a 50/50 vote, 52/48. Thanks to all the people who voted. I appreciate that. Well, on my own, I contacted every physician and every nurse practitioner who works in Park County. And I asked them to fill out a short, short survey as to whether the festival should be held or not. I only had one doctor out of the 15 that I sent out tell me we should continue to have the festival. That just tells me that the, the health community is not in support of us to have the festival. They see that as a problem. And I do have those responses right here that I would be glad to, to, to share with Dan and Jim. I won't share names. I don't think that's fair to the individuals, but they can look at some of the responses and what some of the doctors in our community said. I had one doctor, matter of fact, say, instead of the covered bridge festival, let's rename it the COVID, COVID Bridge Festival. And that was his, his thought. He sees this every day. They're, they're, they're doctrine in our community. And he sees this as a, as a huge problem. So with all that being said, I have to come to some kind of conclusion. My conclusion is, I see no justifiable reason to have the festival. I've not heard from one person that's giving me a justifiable reason to have the festival, except money. Except money. And if money means more than the lives of the people of our community, then our priorities are not in the right place. And so because of that, I will be voting to cancel the covered bridge festival.
Thanks, Bruce. Appreciate it. Dan?
Okay. I respect your take on the whole thing, Bruce. I have also myself contacted a couple different, one nurse practitioner, I've talked to one doctor. The nurse practitioner that I have talked to has told me that the numbers are skewed by probably 50%. The nurse practitioner that I have talked to has told me that the numbers are skewed by probably fifty percent. The test, a lot of the tests they've been giving have been COVID tests, not COVID nineteen, I do understand the numbers are skewed. That being said, I still don't want to see one person come down with it. And also, my wife has a business in Bridgeton, she is pretty heavily involved with the Bridge Festival, I know she has spent money already buying stuff for the Bridge Festival. I myself have been accused of not being able to make a fair judgment. I guess it should be said that this winter I will eat, I will pay my bills, whether we have a festival or don't have a festival, that does not play one single part in whether I should make a decision or shouldn't, but. I believe it's probably best if I do not make a decision and don't vote and let you and Jim, because if I do vote, either way, I'm going to be accused of doing it for the money, so I would rather listen to what you guys say, and I'll accept your decision, because I don't make my living from the Bridge Festival, it is, goes towards our retirement, but do I make my living doing that? No, and I don't want to be accused of making someone sick over putting money in my pocket or my wife's pocket, so, that being said, I want you two to make the decision, and I'm happy with it. Is that fair enough?
Whatever you want to do, that works for you, that works for me. On that line of what you were just talking about, someone online, of course, posted that, well, that Nissan column are going to want to have it because they're both invested in it, we've been there every year, since I was seven years old, so they're going to have it. So, my wife and I talked about it, we decided if we choose to have the festival, then we decided that we just wouldn't set up this year, that way we'll take that conflict of interest out of it. Then I had somebody else at a meeting say, well, you'd better set up, you can't be having those people come in there, you guys hide at home the whole time, so, so you just can't, can't win on that. So, I'm going to finish up this statement here that I started talking about a while ago, I know that all of us have had a tough time trying to, to decide whether to, to go one way or the other on this, I know we've all done our diligence, I've met with many groups, many people, I've had so many conversations. On the TMLs, for example, there are thirteen hundred and thirty-three, if I recall correctly, but right at thirteen hundred, transient merchant licenses issued for the Cover Bridge Festival every year, only a hundred and fifty-one of those are Park County people, a hundred and fifty-one out of thirteen hundred and thirty-three. So the biggest impact would be, you would think, on the people outside of Park County, even business-wise. Of course, the local businesses, the established businesses are going to suffer as well, because population will be down, but talking about population, let's just use the number a million, because a million has been always thrown around, because that's how many people come during the festival in that ten-day period, and I talked with our health officer today, right now we have sixty-four cases and expect one more, we have twenty-three that are active and one hospitalized, and that's a twenty-year-old that's hospitalized, not an old person like me, we've had nine clinical and one death, the ages range from four to eighty-eight. So, it's a real concern, so let's say that our positivity rate is about twelve right now, let's say it's just ten, if we had a million people come in over those ten-day periods, that's a hundred thousand people who will have passed or would have shown a positive on a test, so we would bring in a hundred thousand infected people into the county to mix amongst our seventeen thousand. And as Bruce said, I think, to think that that wouldn't have an impact on us is kind of far-fetched, I believe, I think it's hard to make that argument that that wouldn't impact us. So, let me finish what I talked about, our statement here, then we'll have this vote, so. There simply is no way to satisfy the economic opportunities and health concerns at the same time. The festival is simply too big and too spread out to maintain adequate levels of safety for the people living in Park County, the people to whom and for whom we, commissioners, are responsible. To allow such a festival, the State Health Department would require enforcement of mask requirements and social distancing, and that simply would not be possible. Many of our organizations typically have retired people working in their booths, and many of those would not risk exposure. First responders would be in constant contact with visitors, and even if a handful of those first responders, because we have such limited numbers, if a handful of those, as a result of coming in contact with people at Mansfield or at Bridgeton or in Rockville, we lost even a handful of those first responders, we would not have enough first responders to take care of us, ambulance service or fire departments. And that was a letter we got from the Belmore Fire Department, saying that they would not go to Mansfield this year, because they're going to have to keep people on stage at the Belmore Fire Department, just for that reason, to try to have enough people to take care of us. So that's a real concern, our schools are trying to open, and as Bruce said, we've had one closed down already because of infections, so it would just take a handful of infections of our children to shut the schools down again. The effects could be devastating, could be long-range, and I know that there would be people on the fringes, whether it be media or whether it be attorneys, whoever it may be, that would be ready to really jump on Park County, should there be a problem following this festival, and I think that's a, a position we probably don't want to put ourselves into, so. I think we have to act on the side of health, and the safety and the well-being of our people, and so as such, I, like Bruce, feel compelled to say I think it would not be a responsible or wise decision to move forward this year and take on all that risk for the monetary benefit. So, that being said, and I think we've all expressed our opinions on this, and to take pressure off of these commissioners, God, it's going to be unfair, I mean, we're going to be, we're going to be nailed on Facebook either way we go on this decision, so I will take the responsibility of making the motion that, out of respect and consideration for the people of Park County, I make the motion that we cancel the two thousand twenty Cover Bridge Festival and take all steps legally possible to try to limit our exposure and limit the number of people coming into the county as guests or as vendors, and that would be my motion to cancel.
And I will second that.
Any more discussion?
Can anyone that's a resident in this town speak?
No, we're not having no comment, ma'am. So it's been moved and seconded that we cancel the festivals for two thousand twenty, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed.
I have a question. We had a phone call in the auditor's office today about TMLs, if you do cancel the festival and someone wants to set up something in their yard, do they still need a TML?
Let's explain what a transient merchant license is, make sure everybody understands. The transient merchant license, we'll deal with this in another meeting, but there will be no transient merchant licenses issued over the Cover Bridge period, that, if that's our decision, which we will, we'll talk about next meeting, but the way to control that, now, if you own the property and you have a retail merchant certificate, you can set up at that property and do business.
That's the key, they have to have the retail.
They have to have a retail merchant certificate now.
Does this include yard stuff?
Yeah, this always comes up about yard sales, the yard sales are limited to three days.
Three days, okay.
So if they do it for four days, yes.
Okay.
And they would not be able to do that, because they would not get a transient merchant license.
And they will be fined, that's basically what we just.
So, you know, we don't want to beat up anybody, the idea is to protect us, so I, I know we'll probably get sued by some people, some place, some who rent spaces to, to vendors, I understand that you can be sued for anything. But the state statute is on our side, the state statute requires a transient merchant license to do business, we only charge for the transient merchant license during Cover Bridge Festival and Maple Fairback, all activity requires a transient merchant license all year long, so no one can set up and do business anyplace other than the address on their retail merchant certificate without requiring a transient merchant license. And the fine for that is five hundred dollars, I think, for the, no, a thousand dollars on the ordinance.
It can be up to a thousand dollars for the merchant, and then based on the new ordinance, it would be five hundred dollars for the landowner.
Per day.
Per day, per.
And, and we don't.
If you have multiple merchants, that's multiple.
Yeah, be sure you understand that, if I've got three vendors set up on my property and they wouldn't have a TML because they won't be issued, that's a five hundred dollar fine for me, the landowner, every day that they're open for business.
But if you have fifteen, that looks great.
Yes, for each one, five hundred dollars for each one, that's exactly right, each, each one, each day. I, I don't, I don't want to get in this fight, we're not, I mean, I'm losing a, a fourth of our retirement income this year, so it's not like I'm doing this without consideration for my family as well and my wife as well, but it's what we've decided that needs to be done, I hope that people will go along with that and try to protect the people of the county as best they can, and I know everybody won't, I know there will be some who will want to do whatever they possibly can to make sure that they're allowed to have people come in to make that money, I understand that, and I don't blame anyone for taking whatever legal measures are possible to try to, try to counter our decision, I, they have a right to do that, I understand that, so long as it's a legal operation and a legal method to do it. Just to decide to set up and play catch me if you can is not something that I would have any respect for whatsoever, so I hope, I hope we all understand how difficult this decision was, because we're impacting people either way we go, and the last thing any of us want to do is to negatively impact anybody. But not taking action, in my opinion, would negatively impact us for a long time, and I think even tarnish the image of the Cover Bridge Festival, image of Park County if we went forward, as Bruce said, every other festival in, in the state and probably the country has canceled, I don't know why we would possibly think that we are special and it wouldn't impact us as well. So, that being said, is there any more business that we need to, to go through, anybody have any business?
What about temporary food permits?
Uh, we've talked about the Health Department, we will send a letter to the Health, Health Department not to issue any health permits, that's a good question, glad you brought that up, I meant to say that, so we, the State Health Department controls the health permits, we control the transient merchant licenses, we will not issue any transient merchant licenses, I've already talked to the health officer, we will, my suggestion to us would be, in fact, we can make a motion on that, would be to send a letter to the Health Department requesting that they not issue any temporary health permits as well, so, let's do that right now, I'll make the motion that we write a letter to the Park County Health Department, asking them to not issue any health permits, temporary health permits during the ten days of the Cover Bridge Festival time.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's passed. So that's our hope, it's awful for everybody, I hate it, I'm losing just like everybody else is, but I think it's a necessary thing to do, I hope we can all get along and come back next year for even a stronger festival, so, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye. We adjourn, thanks folks.